Mr. Colonel.
Miller.
President.
Jennifer Senior.
Councilman. President.
Wisco.
President.
Suzy Lewis.
President.
Ben Mayhem.
President.
Josh Farren.
President.
There we go.
This time, I would like to invite Reverend Nathan Crowe to come forward and lead us in prayer. May you stand before our president.
Good morning, Father. We thank you for your infinite wisdom. You have established means for us to live in a good and civilized society in this world. That you have provided reverting authorities that can help create order where it might be chaos due to our own choices, due to the evils of the human heart. Father, we ask now that you, as a source of wisdom, would please grant that on each member of this council, please, Lord, and for that of this city in general. May this become a place and a community that has lived well, that has lived in a way that is honoring to you, and may your truth be present, may your truth be active in this world. We love you, Father, and we thank you for the goodness you've given us and the blessings that have made that possible, especially the blessing of your son. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and the super republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each of you were sent in a packet of minutes from the meeting on May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion made second to accept the minutes as written and presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you want to know, motion carries. Again, just trying to, we've got our budget workshops coming up here, and Councilman Deckard, we talked about the coming in early, similar to what we did last year. Everybody's okay with that, so we'll plan on the meetings in July, in August, coming in, yeah, four thirty?
Four thirty.
And working everything. Yeah, so we'll have that scheduled also. Again, as we get ready for our budget time, this FYI, our transfer station, the month of May, had lost twenty-nine thousand dollars. So that gives us a total of two hundred and ten thousand dollars we've lost on transportation, I'm sorry, transfer station this year, our sanitation department. So just wanted to keep you abreast of that. On the agenda tonight, Mr. Miller is going to come and give us an update with our economic development.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the time this evening. I just wanted to come and share some things with you about what's going on in Morgan County and relative to Martinsville. First of all, our local team is doing a great job with their housing developers. One of the things that we're working on as a city and county partnership is the Ready Grant Program from the state of Indiana. As you recall, the state approved a five-hundred-million-dollar project. Morgan County is part of a six-county region that includes Johnson, Morgan, Hendricks, Putnam, Montgomery, and Boone Counties, and we were awarded forty million dollars. And one of the things that we've put at basically the front of the agenda because of, as it scored with the Princeton Young, the accounting firm for the state, one of the highest, most urgent issues in our community, in our suburban community, is drainage on the east side of Martinsville. Score highest out of everything ready to go, if that's the issue. The mayor, the city has made its presentation, the county has made its presentation to the state, and we're just trying to find a way to get those funds, because we know we have a ditch process that we need to accomplish on the east side of town, the road to the interstate project, when we get that resolved, the mayor can start rebuilding development in the community of housing. Mr. Oaks noted at your previous meeting, more multifamily developments looking at the county as well, again, here in Martinsville. We've had such great success downtown, the Flaherty Collins Project downtown. We are also seeing an interest in Morgan County and Martinsville, another place where we could bring in multifamily housing. There was a multifamily housing project that recently walked away from a property in Mooresville, it was a twelve-acre site, is behind Gray's Cafeteria, if you can picture where Mooresville Police Department is on Indiana Street there. T W G on Indianapolis and Bloomington, Travis Vensel, had approached that site to put a hundred and eighty workforce development apartments on the site. Housing costs got away. The site has some difficulties based upon engineering, it was formerly a flood plain that has been filled. The cost of the project and developer couldn't be profit margins, you can't profit as a developer, you pretty much don't know. So we're still looking for those opportunities for that type of housing in our county as well, because we need housing for our workers, for our young people, the people who are starting out, who might not afford that first house. So people want to anchor in Morgan County, and the mayor and the Duff Company Corporation have been continuing to work with developers on that front. And one of the things that we've recently noted in the EDC is this, we still work on end-user projects. We have a project called Project Recipe that is considering a site in Morgan County that would be over three hundred million dollars and eight hundred jobs, and we're in the hunt. So it's, we're in a proposition where if we can continue to stay in the game and can continue to overcome certain objections they have to the site, and we can meet their needs on labor and on growth opportunities in the county, then we have a pretty good opportunity here to diversify the industrial base in Morgan County, which brings some of our workers back. Forty percent of our workforce leaves the county for a wage each day, so we'd like to find a higher wage opportunity to pull those folks back into the county, do our restaurants better, do our service club better, have everybody back in the community for ten hours a day instead of losing them, that's a key thing. Now, at the same time, we continue to lose small businesses, and we've talked about this at length in the past. As an example, recently, I saw on social media, my teammate showed me a copy of a note from a local company that's announced that they're going up to, I think, Marion County, that we had actually tried to get into the city property done by Little Church Road. And the same thing's going on up in Mooresville, as companies are looking for growth space, we don't have that growth space in Morgan County. So not only now am I chasing the end-user projects, but primarily what we're working on now is capital developers, the developers who will come in and take down the dirt and make the dirt ready for us so that end-users do have a place to go, because frankly, you don't have that capacity, we don't have that capacity, our redevelopment commissions are acting as a developer in our communities until private capital comes in. So what we're looking for is now those developers that we can land here. Earlier this year, we met with the Indiana Health Industry Forum to talk about Martinsville as a location for life sciences, perhaps the opportunity to build spec lab space in the future. That conversation continues, because Martinsville is right on the I sixty-nine corridor that we've identified as one where we'd like to see medical device, medical manufacturing. Sidebar of that is, with Mooresville undertaking its new comp plan update with HWC, Monrovia has just finished its, the city is revamping its, the county will revamp its based upon its buffer zone elimination. In the last seven years, or last five years, we'll have, have had seven planning updates by HWC in Morgan County. So now that we have our plans in place, which soon we'll have, it's time to get on with things. When a plan's in place, capital can follow it. If you don't have a plan in place, capital doesn't know where to go. One place capital's looking is at Waverly, the southwest quadrant of I sixty-nine and one forty-four. We've introduced a developer, Indiana developer, to that property owner, it's about a ninety-acre gross acre site, it'll be shaved down a little bit because of the interstate, and they're working up a very nice mixed-use project. So what we're going to see is Waverly being a front door to Morgan County, and really very complemented by growth that will happen across the highway and the east side, the western Johnson County, the Barker'sville and the Duke family. Part of what we introduced through the whole Ready project was that we would be working on Waverly Sewer and be complementing things that are going on over in Barker'sville and Johnson County as well, and that growth development has indicated it could be a hundred and thirty-five-million-dollar capital investment for new homes in that area. So what we hope is then, we can create a capital site for that residential development where commerce can occur in Waverly. Between the interstate and the river, it's kind of tight there, of course, the county has its sewer system that's in there, we're looking at ways how can we grow that? How do we help, how can Martinsville and the county and private utilities come together and create an opportunity, Henderson for growth? So every step of the way, it brings more capital opportunities to Martinsville. And then I just want to tell you a couple of things too, real quick, about Monrovia, Monro township. The developer has a couple hundred acres out there that they have an interest in, so they're starting conversations on that now. It's based upon the I seventy Commerce Floor, again, using the interstate corridors for commerce primarily, and then putting your homes back into the nice natural settings that we have here in Morgan County. It's a great opportunity. We're also seeing a lot of interest coming up out of Bloomington with regard to the southern Morgan County, which is a good thing for us as well, because in the EDC, we have Ivy Tech, the Chancellor of Bloomington is involved in our board directors, and we have German American Bank, which has been very active here, and so business is creeping up out of Bloomington to complement what's going on here and supporting our efforts in helping you grow businesses in the county. So again, a lot of activity in that sense. We do not have the inventory to meet the demand. I say that every time I'm in front of a microphone. We need to continue to work so that when developers do come into the communities, we welcome them, because we need assessed value, we need population. And the good thing about Martinsville is it's been so willing to say, we want to be that population growth center, where some of the other communities may be a little more aggressive. You being on this interstate core brings a distinct advantage to you and certainly helps us, because we hear it all the time, well, where are the workers? Well, we have a workforce that lives here, a workforce we'd like to grow here and bring jobs and help keep them here. So that's what we continue to focus on in the EDC. Our executive committee, the mayor, Terry Brock, County Surveyors, our president, we'll see Jennifer Bill Scott's the treasurer, we have Keith Lindauer, Mike Hurst, I'm missing a couple of names, but we meet, we meet this Thursday, we have our monthly meetings. We'll be meeting here in RMC's corporate office, James Tanner, the CEO of RMC, is our host, he's on our executive committee. Again, just to move this thing forward, and we're not trying to bowl anybody over with unanticipated growth, we're trying to bring modest growth to a county that simply hasn't grown. So that's our objective, and we appreciate you continuing your investment in that and providing the mayor to us as a resource as well. And also, Councilman Wisco sits on our full board, representing the, the, the city council as a full board member. So thank you for your time this evening. I hope that gives you a little bit of insight into what we're doing behind the scenes, and I will do this, as I always do, if you need me, please reach out to me on my cell phone, three one seven, seven six zero, forty one fifty. Mayor, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mike. Does anybody have any questions for Mike this evening while we're getting five to seven?
Is there any future plans for like the north end of town or the thirty-nine bypass coming through? I heard a lot of stuff about the whole east side and northeast side coming up from the south, but nothing in that direction. We got the, we got our.
There's some question.
Levy problems coming up in the future. Did you talk about that? We'll talk about the thirty-nine, it does through sixty-seven, either by from Mooresville to thirty, thirty-nine, thirty-seven, sixty-nine, whatever you want to call it. No talk of that, just all of that over there trying to grow that direction, but nothing to fix up this.
Well, only because I'm trying to limit my time up here in front of my microphone. Sure, there's, there's great interest in redevelopment opportunities on thirty-nine as well as on the sixty-nine, and so with the levy project of what Mr. Oaks and Mayor have been working on in that perspective, the city, once you see that infrastructure falling into place, you'll see when the plan is laid, capital will follow it. And we are working behind the scenes with a project that I just simply can't say on the front because of our disclosure agreement, but it's local, and it would be an opportunity to bring good entertainment to the community, and it would be something that we hope to put over there on that, on that road project, if we can possibly do it. One of the things that we're finding out is this, the southern end is the Opportunity Zone, which is the federal corporate tax break, or not corporate tax break, but sort of a little for federal capital gains, the Opportunity Zone has created South in Martinsville and down that census tract. That's invited some interest down south, where we see redevelopment, are starting to see things come up. I think there's a new gas station that's going to go down past Waymans down in that kind of area, but there is interest here, I'll doubt it. The key to it is, we don't have a lot of, there's, there's not a lot of available property on the market right now from a commercial and industrial perspective. So the more pressure we can put on that, the more pressure the infrastructure can put on that, the more the value of the property rises. I think you're going to see that the thirty-nine quarter does see a lot of redevelopment activity. That, and I was over, a developer from Illinois was looking at the Taco Bell site, the former Taco Bell site recently, so again, the east side being, how do we get redevelopment over as well? I think one large thing about that is telling the story of how easy it actually is to get on the east side of Martinsville with the interchange that we have when we have, it's pretty easy to get in.
Mike, you talked about growth with businesses, multifamily housing, bringing workers, young people, people looking for their first homes. What is your two-year projection of the amount of families that you're wanting to bring to Martinsville and your long-term goal plan? What's your projection?
Well, if you're asking that a year ago before all this economic stuff, I probably would have a different answer, and knowing the next year of that and getting the infrastructure taken care of, my understanding is that developers are ready to go here based upon the sites and infrastructure resolution. They're pushing over, you know, over a hundred new homes, one developer in their own right is pushing over a hundred new homes a year. So when you get these national home builders in here that can create inventory and also high inventory regimens, like for example, Mooresville has Piatt builders, top Piatt from Indianapolis area, but I would like, I remember in two thousand and eight when, when the fall started, I started losing the students out here after the flood, at the time I lived in Edinburgh and was on my way to relocate to South Dakota in June of two thousand and eight. And I have watched over that period of time how that's taken a hit here, so I think we're going to see a pretty strong rebound, once we get the opportunity over here, and then certainly two things, the economy has to settle down, obviously, and then secondly, with that is the supply and demand, what settles the economy down is getting our supply chain back in order so we can get more homes built. I asked a home builder this week if there, late last week, if there were a slowdown in Morgan County, and there has been a slowdown in transition, transactions, the data showed that, but there's not a slowdown in inquiries and interest of potential home builders and home buyers. They're still looking here, and the interesting thing to me, I spoke this morning to the minute, the toll commissioner up in Mooresville is, it's amazing to me how people are not missing a beat despite what we've seen, despite the home crisis, people are still buying. So people have the financial wherewithal, they just need the supply.
Thank you.
Mike, what, what can you tell us about Project Recipe, I think you said? Aaron?
What can I tell you about, about everything?
Maybe just a little.
It's a very large, it's a very large project in a, what's, a typically non-traditional industry sector for us in Morgan County. We're competing against another indication, at least one other location in central Indiana. We did not originally submit for this project, and the state asked us to submit for this project. So we have hosted the company, and they've seen large, the acres up in Mooresville Business Park, the fifty-four acre tract, that wasn't the Nice Pack, and basically, this project would be roughly twice the size of what Nice Pack would have been. Here's what I'm finding from a competitive perspective, this is why I will tell you, we are not, we are not at a competitive advantage. As I noted earlier, we lack sites that are ready yet. That site has a number of issues to it, but as we keep showing the prospect, the ability to overcome those obstacles, those objections in a relative, in their relative timeframe, we're still in the hunt. And so I made a statement earlier this year, before Project Recipe, indicating that I thought one way or the other, that fifty-four acres would find a user this year, because there is a lot of activity for those larger footprints out there. And then, of course, the spec building that sits to the east of it, the Mooresville Redevelopment Commission has sold the Dawson Logistics out of Danville, Illinois, and tonight, that redevelopment commission is discussing an opportunity, I think, for a company that Dawson would bring to the north side of that spec building. So again, what we're trying to do is someplace in the county, create these jobs. What Mayor Costin has said in the EDC and said publicly, and I completely agree with this, is, hey, look, if we don't have, the real estate is conducive to industrial development here for what they need because of soils and those issues, and they have to go up north where that ground's a little more compacted, okay, that's great, now let's create a transportation system in the county. I'm not knocking that, which is already here, but let's enhance what we have so we can get the workers back and forth. And I think that's one thing we're going to look at in the future as well, because companies are asking us for our workers. I wish that I could tell you more here, but you're on my board, you know.
Yeah, maybe, bad question. Well, and certainly, I don't have to say this, but I'm going to anyway, you'll let us know, all of us, when we can help in any way, in any form with any of these projects, be it driving a Peoria to shake somebody's hand, or call somebody, or actually taking official action, because that sort of project, I believe, is the fundamental change that we need.
That's, that's an excellent point, Council, and I'll just point this out. I bring to the table who the client wants to meet, it's the client's call. And one of the things that the client asked me, they worked to meet again last Tuesday in the committee, their teams got split up on travel so they couldn't make it, but one of the things that I'm thinking is because he is the highest-ranking municipal official in the county, in the sense of being the CEO of Martinsville, and he's on my executive, he's on my sales team, because the mayor's going to be involved in that at some point in time, making that very pitch, we've got the workers, we just need the jobs.
Aaron?
I'd like to respond to a couple of them. He went down a lot of different avenues. Starting with Josh, you were asking about the northwest side of town, we have a new plantway map from FEMA, it's going to be introduced to the public in the next month or two, several of those schedules happening. It takes our current levy, makes it unaccredited, people living on that northwest side of town are going to see places never should be sure to come in here. So we're a comet period right now, we're probably three years away from having a levy that would back protect it all again, so that's kind of what we're at on that. That makes it that commercial district, both to that northwest side we're talking about and to the south side of thirty-nine will become a commercial property. So the fee, probably over the twenty-three and twenty-four, probably a hundred homes, that's two hundred ten to the fuel system, that, those are dollars that cover both of my.
What I was thinking about.
Yeah, I think one of the things we look at is, we want more assessed value and more income tax revenue, and more people making more money in our county, so we can gain those income tax revenues.
Working together.
The premise is this, the last decennial, Morgan County grew by a total of four-point-two percent of their tenures, less than one-half of one percent of population growth per year. That was maybe about three hundred and thirty people a year. Well, our, our commercial enterprise expects more of us. They want more consumers, they want more customers, they want more opportunities to sell and provide services. That comes with more people making more money. What we're after is how do we, how do we gain wealth and knowledge in our communities? And that's kind of the premise of what we're looking at, and it's not necessarily an easy thing, because as change advocates, sometimes we can unsettle people's perspectives. We have to help them understand that the change that's coming will be of benefit, or potentially can be of benefit to them. I have this, this issue in this sense, Morgan County loses its young people. They go to college, or they live in central Indiana, I'm not saying all of them, obviously, but the data would indicate they're not moving back here because we just noted we don't have the population growth. They're moving to Hendricks and Johnson, they're moving to places where there are homes, there's capacity, right? So we lose all that, and so I've had conversations with people, and I've asked, wouldn't you rather have your kids here, living here closer? And it's not uncommon here, well, not if it's going to cost me something, I get that, but people don't understand what it's costing us that they don't live here, and that's why we need to create more capacity.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mike, thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Maron.
Yep.
Mr. Maron? Grab your mat.
My first. I hit one. Two minutes, okay. It probably won't be much longer than that, you know, may have to talk a little later. You may hurry down some people.
Hello.
Right, good bye. As all of you know, I try to annually kind of give you an HR update, so I wanted to do that tonight. Yeah, things have taken a little bit longer just because HR is kind of a small part of my job, and sometimes I kind of get put back to the back part, but I want to give you an update on some things that we're working on, some things that are coming up, and then I have to give, I need to get your opinion on that too. So one thing that we've done to kind of help spearhead things, get things kind of get some momentum, is we have formed a wellness team, and basically what we've done is we have pulled a person that represents each department and created a wellness team, and our approach is we're looking at the entire wellness of the individual employee, so we're looking at the, if you're familiar with the circle of wellness, if you're not, I suggest looking it up, and we're trying to look at the different areas that our employees are struggling with, whether that's with basic life skills, you know, financial trouble, things with, you know, depression, anxiety, you know, both the mental wellness and the physical wellness, so we're trying to look at it from a holistic, or the whole picture. So one thing that we're going to be doing here in upcoming months, we're going to be having some different opportunities for all the employees to participate, you will be invited to some of those events, we kick those off so that you're aware and in the loop on those. We'll be doing some fitness challenges, safety classes, basic life skills, leadership training, we'll be working with management for succession planning, and things of that nature. So I just want to give you kind of a brief, you know, just let you know those things are coming up. End of this month, we're having our first CPR class for the employees, so our goal is to have every employee go through CPR training class, and that way they're certified in CPR per se, we'll also begin some basic life skills class and things like that. So any questions on all of that? I know I'm probably getting close to my two-minute limit, but. All right, then the item that I need your opinion on, it's a problem, it's a really good problem to have, so you are all aware that we've been really trying hard to build up our employee benefit trust account. Three years ago, it was in really bad shape and weren't fully funded. Happy to report that by the end of this year, we will be, and Mayor Beck and I have been talking, one thing we'd like to, now, it's June, so don't hold me to this, but looking at the numbers right now, it appears like at the end of this year, we'll be in a really good position, and one idea that we kicked around is, we thought we'd like to put some of that money aside into like the rainy day fund or something to that nature at the end of the year, if we have enough funds available. So wanted to give the council's opinion, is that something that you'd like us to work with Dale on, how we draft that, how that, what that looks like, so we could present that to you at a later time, or what your opinions are on that?
Is that something to work with, about the workshops?
We could.
Yeah.
I'd say let's, let's do that, because I always feel like the rainy day fund, bro.
And that's what we thought, it'd be a really good way of building that fund back up.
Yes.
And employees, administration, everybody's worked really hard, put us in this position, so it's, like I said, it's a good problem to have, but I want to be wise with those monies also. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the bed? Those are ours, two minutes.
Can I go over? I didn't hear the beep, so.
I didn't hear the chime blow.
I appreciate that. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. The tax payment on the next order of business has been pulled from the agenda, so we're going to the first reading in accordance two thousand and twenty-two dash zero zero thirty-eight. Mr. Colley?
Yes, this came before the planning commission, and it made me, the planning commission voting unanimously to recommend a re-zoner of this property, it's common, known as four ninety East Morgan Street, it's currently a zone B two, the issue was to re-zone that property to B three. So again, the planning commission, and the recommendation, city council already know that, through, since forty-nine, our first reading, certainly, I guess, though, if there's a pleasure for it, it's the annual state people, to suspend the rules and pass it on one reading, but forty-nine, our first reading.
Yep. I'm sorry, Council, what did you say, should they want to move it from B two to B three?
Yes.
And what was the purpose for?
Well, I think the understanding, or the idea is they're going to make that a carlot, it's been a carlot over the years, it's been our repair shop, it's been a lot of things automobile related, but under our current B two zoning, a carlot is not allowed, would be allowed with a B three, and a special exception of the, uh, the year.
Any questions? Who wants to talk?
Morgan, Grand, North, Northwest ones? Yeah.
Any questions or comments? I mean, like Mr. Colley said, this being the first reading, there's no action that needs to be taken tonight, unless you want to suspend the rules.
Uh, I will ask a question, they did remove the tanks, is that correct?
Yes.
Did they have any issue with the soil there or not, or do we know?
I understand it was, you got clean bill and all.
Council, does anybody have a, I mean, I have a, on suspending a reading, unless you want to wait?
You would take it, if unanimously vote by the council or the mayor's president to suspend the rules, then you get seventy-five percent of the council president to. the rules, and you get seventy-five percent of the council president to pass the current parliamentary rule.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
If not, then I would consider a motion in regards to...
Does the west side have any issues over there?
No.
Just want to check.
I would not have an issue, no.
I would make that motion.
The motion made to suspend the rules, is our second.
Okay.
The motion made, second to suspend the rules, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Show me it was six oh, to suspend the rules. So then, I would entertain a motion in regards to ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero three-eight.
Thank you.
The motion made, second to pass the ordinance, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries. Thank you. In your packets, you were also dealing with the claims. Are there any questions or comments in regards to the claims?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
The motion made, second to approve the claims, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All of us, say aye. Sign. Motion carries. Any comments from the council tonight? And Councilman Decker, if you'd like to give us an update on your death?
Yes, sir, I will, I appreciate that. Uh, first of all, I have to count on Chief Green to help me, because I responded to the hospital, and I'm not sure what annual service was EMS that came. Okay, so I would like to thank the City of Martinsville, Fire Department, Police Department for responding. Former lawyer, Decker, Councilman Decker, uh, had a little blood pressure issue, or had on Wednesday, got a little too high, and then Saturday, it kind of disappeared. And so, uh, they had to revive him. He was transported out here to the local hospital, and then transferred to St. Vincent. And so, it would be the same hospital on the eighty-sixth street that did his second open-heart surgery, as well as his back surgery, so he was in good hands. And, uh, last Wednesday, they installed a pacemaker, I C D, I think they called it. Uh, so he is at home now, resting. A little bruised up over here where they installed it. Resting, a little tired, but, uh, we thought he was going to come back from the surgery. He attended the memorial service, and, uh, I think he performed a wedding even, and he was geared up for this council meeting, and, uh, the Lord had other plans, and so he's still, uh, still at home resting and recuperating. So thank you for checking in, we appreciate all the calls and the text messages. So, on behalf of, uh, him and my mother, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any comments from the council?
I have another one, if I could, please. Uh, I know I spoke with, uh, attorney here, Dale. Uh, I know the county did a redistricting, uh, we have to do it every ten years after the census. And I know, we had a conversation, we were looking at using what the county, I think they use Banning Engineering Act. Uh, have we taken any further steps yet, Dale? Can you tell me?
The clerk was on vacation, I think she got back today, so I have a message in to her to call me.
I say that because I know what we have until December thirty-first, but I will get started on that as soon as possible. I did meet with her today, she, yeah, she did, she came back, and I was speaking with Mr. Messner as well. Uh, I know ten years ago, we did this, I didn't like it, because as a precinct committee man, as well as a councilman, I was never consulted. And I know, my precinct's changed, I lost, uh, part of my precinct to Washington One, and Washington Two, I believe it was. And I was informed that we were invited to it, I never saw an invite, and I don't know whether the city had one. But, uh, they've done the redistricting, and it has greatly affected not only us, City of Martinsville, but as well as the school district. And, and I want to see till we get on it, because at this point in time, we've lost two districts. I've been in my district for third or some years, I'm now in a new district. I know my father's been in his district for over fifty, over sixty years, he's in a new district. And I know, and I'm more happy if the council wants to see me afterwards, take this, I brought the list, but, um, Josh has been placed in a new district, Suzie's been placed in a new district, well, it was Jim. And, uh, we've lost two districts, like I said, and, and they are just completely out of whack. And, and I want to make sure that we have a voice in this, that we get that. And I, from my understanding, I think Moore'sville, that's why they went to Ward's, uh, so that their districts, their precincts were not affecting them, and that's why they went to Ward's. I don't know what we need to do, we just, we do our own, but that's why I want to make sure Dale, we stay on this with them. And I'm sure, you know, they've got, it's something they've got all the information we need, but we just need to fix our line, because the way it is right now, uh, too many of us are puzzled running our districts, or we're running against each other. Uh, so, I would like to, I wish we, we could have been involved in that, because I would object with them, they, they redid this. And I can say, it's, I mean, it was stopped by, but I brought the, the numbers, and I got a picture of the, the map, I took a picture of it today, so everybody can take a look at what the districts look like.
Who was, who was in charge of that?
Well, the county did their own redistricting. City of Martinsville has an obligation to do our own redistricting as well. We have to have that on every year. So, uh, it's a process. Council needs to select a redistricting coordinator. That person then will work, uh, to draw maps. There's a public, uh, comments section. Public has the opportunity to have their own maps if they so desire. It's adoption of the counseling application requirement. So it's a process, it'll take you, uh, probably a good two to three months, so, I mean, it's important to start on the process. We have, the, the statute says that districts have to, uh, be substantially, um, similar in size, in population size. So, that's the criteria. I know we haven't gained a lot of population since ten years ago. Just a little bit, but, but the, the city has the opportunity to draw its own maps.
That's what kind of threw me, because I know we haven't grown that much. And, you know, the last time, they just kind of moved the lines over here and there, and I think mine was the only one that affected, and now it's, it's kind of affected us all.
According to the clerk's office, they've consolidated. They do the census every ten years, and then the commissioners, the county commissioners are the ones that sort things out according to population. So your question was, who does it? County commissioners, according to the clerk's office, Stephanie Elliott, the county commissioners then take, after the census is done, or completed, then they sort things according to population to make it equitable. And this is done every ten years. The last time it was done was in two thousand twelve, when adjustments had to be made, or resolutions had to be passed.
Correct, the commissioners did that earlier this year in townships, precincts, county council districts, and commissioners' districts. And so, I don't know how discrep, I mean, how, we can't, don't think, and then precincts within Washington Township, but just the city council districts, right? And then the criteria, the population, but also, some ambiguous case law I'd have to look at, the natural borders, like streets and so forth, and then there's one other that's relatively intuitive.
Hey, contractors with Banning Engineering, the statistical analysis was presented to them, and pretty much followed what Banning was up.
So, well, with that being said, then, council needs to think about who wants to be their coordinator in this. I know one law firm out of Indianapolis that already, I'm thinking Mr. Coffey, and made their services available, have a fee, uh, but...
That's why I think if we, Banning, sure, there's still going to be a fee for us, but they've already got our information, because they obviously were part of the county, and they helped, will help us put it on the G I S and everything, so I think we probably want to stick with them, because...
I was in on a couple of those meetings, and they were able to take a big screen, and zoom in, zoom out, and, you know, fifteen people live in this side of the street, I mean, if we were able to participate in the discussion with that technology, I don't, I could think of that, cover it, I mean, we can decide. It was, I was amazed with the exactness of it.
I am more happy, I mean, go on, do whatever you like, but I'm more happy to serve as well on that, so I don't want to see till it's done thoroughly.
So, Eric, I see there's a motion on the floor for Councilman Decker to be the chairman of the district.
Yes, there is.
I think that was a second. Thank you, Suzie.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those no, congratulations.
Yes.
And you made the second one, where?
Suzie?
Did you make the motion?
Jim Wosko.
I mean, never mind. I'd love to give you a question, I guess it's a question.
On record, Dale.
So, good luck, and may expect to report next, next few weeks.
I appreciate that.
Anything else from the council?
I just, I'm very happy with the information on our water that was put in our last water bill, I thought that was very informative, very, uh, you know, it had all the statistics in it, and really gave me a piece of mind, and I'm sure it will help our citizens to have peace of mind, that our water is fine.
Oh, I thought, I thought she was talking about my disconnect, oh, it's maybe.
Thank you.
And that quality, water quality report we sent to our webmaster this morning, he was on vacation last week, so it should be posted to our webpage hopefully in the next twenty-four hours. So constituents who want to see, who don't get, some of our constituents get electronic bills, they don't get paper, so that would be available to them through our website. We also have a copy available here in our office, clerk's office, in our divisions as well, and it will be available to any individuals.
Totally, on the website, ma'am?
I'm hoping within twenty-four hours, I have not heard otherwise. It normally takes a little bit of a process to convert, to do what they have to do, if it's supposed to. It could be up now, but...
Anything else from the council? Anything from the quality, please? If you would, just kind of, oh, you have to state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Okay, my name's Janice Kistler, I live at one eighty West Columbus, which, as you all know, is right smack in the middle of a parking lot planned by the county. I'm happy to report that they have agreed to pay all costs associated with moving my home to another physical location. Uh, however, there is a caveat of that, there's eminent domain is still on the table, so I'm not out of the woods yet. But the reason I'm speaking to you tonight is the property in question that they want to move my home to is two ninety West Columbus. And, um, the city apparently has a lien on that property. So if there is anything that they have you can do to expedite a sale to the county on my behalf, I would be eternally grateful. And then I have a couple of personal, not personal concerns, concerns from citizens and visitors to our community. Um, the first being the alley behind the library, I'm concerned for our, um, workers over there, because we all come out, uh, a door that is at the back of the building on the new park, and just right outside where the steps are, they're saying, uh, maybe about that deep of a pothole, and I'm worried that somebody's going to step in that and get hurt. And it, right now, it's light out, so probably that won't help happen when we come out at night, but it's going to get darker soon, and I, I'm just worried about all those walking out there at night. The other concern is, uh, visitors have mentioned how awful our city sidewalks are, and a lot of them in residential areas. And I did a walk down to the property of two ninety from my lot, and current lot, and it wasn't really great. There's like, no sidewalk, it's all grass or something, and, and that can, that can tag you up if you're walking also, plus they're not all level. And I know the city hasn't historically gone around and fixed those, but if there's anything you can do in the future regarding that, it would make our city look a lot better, maybe attract more people.
And I'll address the sidewalk situation real quick. Uh, we do have a million dollars in our budget this year for sidewalks, but we are getting ready to let that bid, I'll have to look at extra as we wait some after we get the information, to be able to do that. But does anyone want to take a guess? Josh, you, you don't get to guess on this, would you? How much it costs to tear out and replace one city block?
One side.
One, one side? Come on, somebody!
One million dollars.
Why is this, not fifteen thousand dollars?
That's a lot of money.
So, if we're going to do both sides, one block, I would agree with you, and so, we're looking to see where we can get the best bang for our buck.
And are there any grants that could be pursued for something like that?
And, and most of the grants for sidewalks, they have to tie into the actual street. But there are, there are, we are going to be doing Harrison Street and Pike Street, I'd say area twenty-four, that is grant money, it's going to be doing those sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, did, uh, speaking of your lots that you're looking to move into, did they also, I think there was a variance issue, did they get that taken care of as well?
I do not know, I haven't heard anything further this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Kistler, how much is the lien that the city has on that property?
I do not know, um, there are some figures on each, just...
My understanding is fifteen thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Any asks to clear the law, if they're saying housing, have to, uh, face the orange.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anyone else? If not, uh, all city offices and services except emergency place and fire will be closed on Monday, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, and observance, uh, Juneteenth holiday. For those who normally have a trash picked up on Mondays, that will be picked up on Tuesdays. Next regular meeting will be June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, seven o'clock here in council chambers. No other business, we are adjourned.